Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Dotler, I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the Town. So, just like to thank you for coming tonight and participating in this forum, to provide your thoughts on developing the community's strategic plan. So, the Town has hired, accompanied by the name of Seer, with us tonight is Kathy Snellgrove. Before I turn the floor over to her, your thoughts are important, so would everybody would like to hear them? If you can't speak loud enough for the front to hear it, please use the mic. It's turned off right now, just turn it on and off as required. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Kathy.
So, we're gonna do a little bit of a sound check. Can everyone hear me? Or do I need to be on the phone? Okay, we're going online. That was simple. That was first crowd participation kind of thing tonight? So, I always think it's a good thing when you do multiple community meetings and stuff, and people come back for a second time. And I see a couple people here tonight that have already been through one of these, so they've come back, so I think that's a good thing. So, thank you to all of you. Like Jim said, my name is Kathy Snellgrove, and I own a company in Brandon called Seer. And not only that, we do, we work with small business, but every once in a while, I get the chance to come out and do community meetings. And I always think it's a lot of fun. Just a little background on me. I started off in corporate world. I worked for the Boeing Company in Winnipeg, and then got the chance to come back home. And so, I grew up in Brandon, but had the chance to come back to home, so I went back home as soon as I could. And from there, I went and I worked at a couple different manufacturing plants in their senior management, and then had the chance to go work with the city of Brandon. In the city of Brandon, I was the general manager of operational services, so I had all kinds of stuff within the city. And then about 15 years ago, my business partner and I decided to start our company. You know, one of the things, one of the things I think about strategic planning is people ask me, "Why do you do a strategic plan?" And the reason I think it's really important for a community is because we all come, and we all are part of a community, and we all have priorities, and there's challenges, and there's good stuff that we love about the communities we live in, and there's challenges that we know we're facing. And one of the things that I've found over my lifetime is that when you get a bunch of people together focused on, you know, where they want to go, it's usually easier to get there. And I think you guys, here in Menadosa, definitely understand that. You know, if you take a look at, and I hate to bring this up, but I'm gonna bring it up, because sitting on the outside, you know, I think the reaction, or how you were able to overcome some of the challenges, some of your flooding is here, like amazing. Where I was sitting in Brandon, I was like, wow! So, you can see how when you can bring people together around a joint cause or around what they want to do, you can really make a lot of things happen. So, that's why, you know, we do a strategic plan. Is we want to see, we want to gain as much information from you about what you'd like to see for your community, understand what challenges you've got. And then, once we gather that information, it's really coming up with what's the plan? What's the plan for the next five to 10 years? And so, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight, because I know your time's valuable. But I also know that when we get lots of input and lots of feedback, it becomes answers. So, my job tonight is really to pick your brains. Is to say, "Okay, you tell me about what things you think are challenges, things that you'd like to see for the community, and I want to pick your brains around what some of those solutions are." Okay? So, it's really, I'm just gonna keep asking you questions, and I'm gonna write as fast as I can here. And anyone who's watching me knows that I can write pretty fast. So, I'm gonna ask you some questions to start, to get you started, and then we're gonna get to some of the tougher stuff. Any questions so far? Clear as mud, right? Okay. So, I'd like you to shout for me, what's some of the things that makes Menadosa amazing?
Our valley.
A valley. What else?
People.
People, tell me about the people! Tell me about them.
Friendly is what you ever see.
Friendly. I could agree to that.
Major walking trails.
Major walking tr-
Nature.
Major walking trails.
Beach and a campground.
Beach and a campground.
Proximity to other communities.
Proximity to other communities. What else you got?
Ski hill.
Ski hill. Keep going.
Young families.
Young families.
Hospital.
Schools and hospital. What else you got?
Parks.
Parks.
Well, green spaces.
Parks and green spaces.
Golf course.
Golf course.
Beach.
Active seniors.
Active seniors. How are they active? Is that the volunteering, or is they, are they just, are they running around, walking around, or?
Both.
Both, nice. What else?
Library.
Library.
Museum.
Museum.
Heritage Village.
Heritage Village.
Squirrel Hill.
Squirrel Hill? Is that all, is that it?
Squirrel Hills, yeah.
You're on the head, what's your goal there?
A newer medical clinic.
A newer medical clinic.
Rock concert.
Okay, I've got a newer medical clinic, I've got rock concert, I've got, I missed one.
Caravan.
Caravan. Okay, you guys gotta get more than just buildings.
Active, um, community groups.
Active community groups.
Lions, roe herds. Sports and recreation.
Sports and recreation.
Churches.
Churches?
Drama club.
Drama club.
Service groups.
Service groups, I've got that one over here.
Pharmacy.
What's that?
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy?
Grocery. Strong co-op.
Strong co-op?
We have all the trades.
All the trades?
Small business.
Is that small business? Yeah.
Our hockey arena moving on to Emmerich. That's a transition.
Sorry, could I have to go again?
Well, our current hockey arena involvement been moving on to Emmerich.
Emmerich?
M-R-E-C.
M-R-E-C?
It's not here yet, but.
Okay.
Cape tall school.
Cape tall school?
Four acres.
Four acres. That's a new one.
Special Olympics involvement.
Special Olympics, that's a new one.
Our bowling alley.
Bowling alley.
And our agricultural society. And communities in bloom.
Manufacturing, communities in bloom. Okay.
There's a cottage area.
Cottage area.
Heritage village.
Cottage area? And that was seasonal?
The bison.
The bison? Yeah.
Daycare.
Daycare.
Dairy.
Sorry, say it again?
Well, I'm just saying daycare, dairy, that's fine.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Restaurants.
Restaurants? I'd like to hear why it is you guys live here. Like, what is the essence of Menadosa?
Beauty.
It's the beauty?
Safe, it's the people.
That's what I want there. It's safe, it's the community.
A good place to raise kids.
It's a good place, in what way?
No active gangs.
That's a good one. Somewhat in dispute, maybe? If I tried to convince you all to come home with me, what would you tell me? Why would you tell me you're staying?
It's a community that comes together.
Can't afford to go anywhere?
We're up here.
I grew up here, can't go anywhere. Is that positive or not?
It's a community that cares about each other. Neighborly.
A community that cares and is neighborly. What else?
It'll, a community that'll come together in the.
I've demonstrated it.
Do others want to call her to wake them up?
I think it is part of the park location though, because you're close to the park, but close to Brandon.
What else?
Lots of athletics for kids.
Athletics? Did you say splat word? Okay, F and O line?
Runners and dentists. Go late even if you don't go to the beach.
The lake? Kayaking?
Ice fishing.
Ice fishing? Got your skating trails?
Skate the lake.
Skate the lake?
Fun fest.
Fun fest?
Two financial institutes.
Two financial institutes.
A bank.
What else?
Vet clinic.
Pardon?
A vet clinic.
A vet clinic.
You don't have to go to Brandon for too much.
That's positive.
Is lots of kind of trails around?
What kind of trails again was that?
Trail.
Trail.
That it? Okay, what else?
Chamber of commerce.
Chamber. What else you got?
Frontier. Barbershop.
Menadosa Foundation.
Menadosa Foundation?
Pretty good Wi-Fi and cell phone service. With a number provider and chat.
Pretty good Wi-Fi and cell phone. That's important these days? What else?
We have a compost and separately a waste management facility for the Westland.
Nice.
And no fees where we report you.
What's that?
Recycle pickup.
Recycle pickup? I thought you said hitchhiker. You've got that too?
Radiator, radiator.
Handyman?
Your first responders, we have fire department and fire medics.
I got to see your firefighters on the field day base, all their posts. You guys were kind of kicking our bed soon in Brandon. Regional library. Regional library.
Taxi.
Taxi company? A taxi driver? Yeah.
Isil?
Isil?
Tennis court.
Tennis? Tennis courts and pickleball?
I think a small town can do personal relationships with people.
Personal relationships with people. Okay?
Food bank.
Food bank?
Would the volunteer fire department be separate from anything that's up there?
Say that again?
Would the volunteer fire department be separate from anything that's already up there?
Let's put it down.
It should be a training.
A training? A training center, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have RCMP.
RCMP, sorry, I missed one over here?
Volunteers in general.
Volunteers in, oh, volunteers in general.
Great bakeries.
Great bakeries.
Our old physi.
Really good sandbagging skills.
Now we go back to the physiotherapy. So hilarious.
What else we got?
Car dealership.
Car dealership?
Uh, yeah, lots of self-care facilities.
Did you say self-care?
Yeah.
You did something, you did the hair.
But you couldn't see sandbagging.
Tribune?
The Tribune? You have somebody up here just went, yes! Oh, she's not here. She wasn't listening.
Sense of belonging, when people know your name or something. Counsel officers.
Tell me about that.
Two.
Counseling?
Counseling, three counsel officers in town.
Okay.
Therapists.
Lawyers and accounts?
Free X-rays and lab facilities.
X-rays and lab facilities? The gym? Sorry, gym? Yeah.
Yoga.
Yoga?
Curling.
Our youth sports in general, we have a lot of, we have different youth sports to attract all this youth, and we're trying to raise youth in this community.
Excellent. Youth sports? Adult sports?
We have wicked senior hockey team.
Wicked senior hockey team! Wicked senior hockey team, love it. And baseball's coming back.
Baseball.
You've been telling.
Service garages.
Service garages, I think we have, oh, service, just throw that in there too.
Fifty plus center?
Fifty plus center?
And service seniors.
Sorry, what was I looking at? Service seniors?
And yellow headed employment.
Yellow headed employment. Oh, I think I missed a cheaper color.
Have lots of independent shops and restaurants not changed.
Independent shops?
Yeah, and restaurants.
And restaurants, not changed?
Yeah, not changed.
Yeah.
Adults' nursing center.
Several high-tech internet companies here, there's two work for a mall. You can connect the area. That's a key point. Several security high-tech internet companies.
Railways, really.
Railway.
Major egg retail.
Major egg retail?
Was it the ski hill, yes?
Yeah, we've got the ski hill. Got the dentist, I think? Okay?
The beach pavilion.
Beach pavilion. Beach pavilion, new council coming? Who else?
Volunteer handyman driver.
Volunteer handyman driver.
Head care.
Cancer care. Sorry, I missed that one? Drive. Drive.
Tourism.
Tourism.
Expression sponsor series.
Expression sponsor series? Did I get it right? Okay, now I'm gonna switch your topics. So, all the good stuff. What's all the challenges you've got?
We have a river that runs through.
Yeah, we have a river that runs through, that floods every once in a while?
Change to red marker.
Flooding river? Cheek, did you say change to red marker?
Yeah.
What's that mean? Oh, got it. Change to red marker, that's what you want? See, that's what we, that's what I want to come up with, you guys are. You want to change to red marker.
Big red beacon here. Change the red marker.
What else we got?
Railway.
Railway, okay.
I mean, no.
Not bad.
Three crosses.
Three crosses? Government or government in general, or?
Two.
The hook-up future of government. For five and eight years.
And, yeah, a consistent and focused approach to economic development. That's maybe the same thing, is that done in the same way?
A consistent approach to economic development. Sorry, I just want to catch this one here. You know, sometimes it takes a little bit to get it heated up. I promise I'll get going. What else we got? What other challenges we got? Sorry?
Water and sewer issues.
Water and sewer issues.
Aging.
So, when you say water and sewer issues, is that?
Aging.
Aging, or is that they're backing up, or is that they're breaking down, or is that? What does that mean?
All of the above.
All of the above. What else we got?
Terrible roads, streets.
Sorry?
Terrible streets.
Terrible streets.
Terrible streets, no stop signs. Long tolls.
No stop signs.
Lack of affordable housing.
Lack of affordable housing.
There's no rental.
High taxes. Need more jobs.
Just, well, no rentals, we've got high taxes, I missed one.
Need more jobs.
More jobs?
Seems for the town employees, if you don't know what the job descriptions are, they have any job descriptions out there, because they start with whether it's sidewalks, crosswalks, inter-time vehicles there, or the back alleys, so they can't get down. The back alleys, they're restricted, and that part time going through, because the scrubber is cut. So, I'd like to know if there is a job description for some of these things, or sidewalks that we need to go through them, that eventually will push the works out. So, I think the job description for all this, what would that be?
Okay, I put down those service downs, is that fair? Okay, and I'll just put the sidewalk weeds, you said crosswalk flow, crosswalk clearing, okay.
And then the spring was basically, there was no, there's no, you know, PM that says, you know, what's supposed to happen this exact time of the year during this cycle of weather. So, you always need a PM to come for them, and it's hard that you should follow.
Yep, PM schedules. Okay. What other challenges we got?
Lack of resources. Lack of paper.
No, 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 we're not, we're not.
I think Warren said lack of.
Lack of resources and financial for future development.
Lack of resources. And?
Finances for future development.
Finances for future development.
Hospital staff.
Hospital staff.
Assistant living.
Assistant living facility? Did I get that?
Yes.
Yeah, no? My hearing's good today?
Something that provides remain dependent to assisted development.
So, there is no assisted living, is what you mean?
Okay. Yeah. What else you got?
I have a student showing that I didn't find an enrollment.
Sorry, say it again.
The client's open enrollment, I don't know if it's a wish, but it was for one.
And the access to the school, grow, I mean, would it?
Access to the school?
We also have a legal drug problem.
A legal drug problem? What else you got?
Access to the hospital, and a lot of the activities are fully resolved, of course, unless you drive.
If you don't drive? Okay. What else you got?
Taxi transportation, rural areas, a lot of going for bus, especially the grand, it's a big problem.
Oh, okay. So, transportation? To our communities?
Medical, yeah.
And that's for medical?
For whatever reason, we don't have buses, that's.
Great, okay.
See, there's a lack of transparency at the council level.
Okay.
So, I'll add that too. So, I have a property with a business on Mendos, and I also have a property in other municipalities. They have Zoom meetings. Regular Zoom meetings, there seems to be very little of the camera meetings, and what I've seen from us here, it seems everything is in camera. You know, you don't know what's going on. Our local community voice is, or paper voice, you know, our paper's been sold, so I don't think there's as much minutes anymore. I don't see why we can have our council and mayor doing Zoom meetings. We've all got the resources, as you said, everybody's got high-speed internet, it's very easy to set up. In fact, I set up one municipal with one of my Internet Starlink dishes, because I'm a good tester, so we both use the county and run in on that. You put an owl in, and you know, the owl can go back and forth to the different councils. I think that's a big thing.
Okay.
And some of that has led to fusion over, you know, what state or some of our large capital spending that we have going on now, or future development. There's more rumors that box are, or they have, what's happening with our lands off the town, should be favorable, which will sell a lot more, what's happening with the ring. Progress on the ring. I personally asked for a, for, you know, spreadsheet of where the funds we have exactly, to figure out, what is the, the free contract price on the ring? What are the drawings? You should have this municipal, you should have the seven drawings right on the wall, where everybody can see them. And I've tried at, at the meeting to even find these drawings, and it seems nobody wants to say they have it one. So, we're spending millions of dollars on this ring, and it seems as, just going by your caution, my dog, I'm forgetting. And it's important fact, because we're applying for the future, but you can't find for a future property, you can't understand what we have, our asset. So, you know, I'd say put a big star there on that, on that form.
Minutes on town property.
Minutes on town property?
And in the property, yeah.
Anything specific in that one?
Go with parks signage.
Parks signage?
Buses.
Okay.
And the lake is in town.
The lake's in town?
Yeah.
Okay. Silt? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, infrastructure to the dam?
Food costs?
Part of water.
Sorry, food costs, sorry, I'm, food costs? The, sorry, was that?
Part of water.
Water, what about the water?
Quarter of quality water, and also you don't hear the hot water, too.
I'm not saying anything.
If hot water, you.
We have, we have a place that we manage that has reverse osmosis in their entire system. It's just a totally different experience with water, in most of this water is on a right-hand scale, and good water is on the left. That's just how far apart, what the water systems are. Communities can, can do something better with the water. We have a place about that.
That's lack of finance. This is reverse osmosis.
Okay, what else?
A plan for the valley to the north of the hospital.
Plan for valley north of the hospital?
Yeah, for the spring letting, for the spring runoff that comes off time. And more people. Gonna be happening with this severe weather we keep getting, so it's a plan.
So drainage?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Attracting businesses.
Attracting businesses?
And maintaining a vibrant downtown. This probably fits in with lack of money and resources, but maybe biting off more than you do with, say, any Parkinson's wreck. Not enough employees to do what many major committees came together to do in the past.
Okay, so I had biting off more than you can chew, new Parkinson's wreck is the example, I missed one before we got there. Thanks.
And drinking.
And add up the night's note from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. Mendos is part of Austin, bringing a lot of the long and half productivity and useful resources of your own physical mind, of sand mending, and fixing the top of the truck. And we know the night situations, a big issue, and I understand that some energy plant workers is, is being done on, on, you know, getting a good plan for like the. We have to start thinking about how we're gonna fund that. The engineering will always come, and we will get the plan on what to do with that thing. As far as thought issues go, we can't, we can't keep it in a rush, every June, May, and August, so just starting a funding process and finding out, even though the engineering work isn't done yet, that needs to be on the.
Okay.
Being prepared.
And I can start looking for grants, so, you know, outreach. And finally, what we spend, with the DFAs that spent in the last two years, and, you know, put those numbers together as leverage on, you know, the army spending on, on, on fixing things to, to mend and maintenance, and use out of, as a leverage on the government. Do you pay us now or pay us later? Think about doing it in the.
Do you think that speaks to the need to coordinate the province and have responsibility for the harvest? So, I don't need some intersectoral collaboration, coordination.
Okay, I'm gonna have to put this down for just a second.
And accessing all grants available.
Because it's, it's gonna continue to happen, if you have this very late, the moisture, it's heating up, it's gonna be raining.
I think inclusion in more diverse populations, where the council has a council in other areas, would also be part of the solution as well. We know we have a thing, but of course we didn't include.
Yeah, but people have problems with that.
What are we doing to recruit them?
We have, we have a lot. And so, it's unfortunate that they just take, try to, but I just thought, I say, where does the budget?
What is the plan policy, and what are the priorities of the plan in terms of, yeah, people involved? Sorry?
You have that conversation, you.
Right, we have that conversation, it's not. It's, we'll just put it down.
We'll just put it down, it's not to say that there hasn't been stuff done, but that's a challenge, obviously, right? So what else?
One of the biggest challenges in town too is that it's almost a distrust between the ratepayers and the council and the town employees.
Distrust?
It's like, any, any decision that the council's made and the town employees are making, it's looked down on, and we're doing the wrong thing for not being backed by that ratepayer.
Well, if we had a maintenance plan, you know, I'd probably agree, you had a maintenance plan where people could see, okay, we're gonna do this this year, we're gonna do that, this is happening, it's in our schedule, and that would take a lot of pressure on the staff, because we know what's going on.
So transparency. So transparency of, just general plans, right? I know we've talked about that one before, but.
Communication, I guess.
Communication?
Yeah, I guess there's a plan how it went before. Like, as a committee member who helped get us the new playground at the beach, when we started that, we were told by council that it wasn't their five-year plan.
Have a, have a.
Yes, a different council, but there was a five-year plan, and it's like, are these things really going to happen in that time? That's a good idea on paper, but actually putting in the building, so it happens.
It's twenty years, but.
I just wanna make sure I captured that one, so, so there's not just communication, but realistic plans as well?
And continuing to engage.
Continuing to engage?
Engage and encourage.
Engage and encourage? Like that?
I think there's a general decline in volunteerism across the board.
Decline in volunteerism. How's that for a caption? So you've got burnout? Service closed, disbanded?
There are some aging, on here.
Okay.
I think community safety, I know I'm muddying up with the green marker.
Nope, you're good!
But at the time that I've lived here, we now no longer ever leave vehicle unlocked, always lock all of the doors on the house. Mentioned drug problems, there's been vandalism issues. And I know what the R C D are, full understanding of it, I'll admit, but we seem to have a large office, but, you know, there's a lot of jobs that they do that are highly trying to control those kinds of things, so in terms of actual policing presence in town, they don't got, I don't think they have the time to do those investigations and those sort of preventative presence type things that we maybe like to see. Still don't wanna move anywhere else, but it's just changed.
Yep. What else you got?
I think there's poverty issues.
Poverty?
There are people using a food bank, there's people who are living in poverty.
You guys wait, wait, you're on the west.
I think I missed that one, I'm sorry.
I think down to, um, the problem that you have, with emergency services, that the emergency, well, last week, they were open weekend.
Okay, emergency room open up a little weekend?
Before we had a lack of doctors, now we have a lack of nurses.
I think we need to re-engage our expectations versus reality, though, because we live in a society now, whether you're seventy-five, you're thirty-five, we're preparing our small community that hasn't grown, I've lived here five years, we haven't grown. We're preparing ourselves to be one of eighteen hundred people, and also have highlight that funds the majority of that community. But I think before we put more solutions or any more challenges on there, we need to look in the mirror, turn our Facebook off, and go, what are we doing to help the community? If we are not going, if you're not in industry coming here, and you don't have any economic development also there, are you sports lovers going down? And it's not a good state that we're in, and yes, we can talk about the flood, and the year, and everything else, I'm a golf member, I'm all these other things, but we gotta look and see, and ask yourself before you say anything else tonight, what have you done to help the community? And that's where we need to be. Quit being social media monsters, it'd be a good, new, new society. So, regarding, you know, a five or ten-year look at, I'm physically financially dependent on, on preparing for dog and tax case. What I have a reserve fund that we need, with the electric vehicles, the E vehicles, which are mandated in town, that we rely on a good chunk of tax base that comes from definitely, you know, re-preparing, I'm hoping that's something, possibly ten years out, that, that loses something. And I think for us, because we do, we do get so much tax revenue from a large industry like that, it, you know, it should be thought about. like that, it, you know, it should be thought about.
Excellent.
So taking that out.
Yep.
Green initiative like charges.
I guess just a general plan to move forward and grow our community, so we can keep having all of the green markers in.
General plan to grow the community.
Thank you.
We have the top three with the green mark.
What's that?
I'm just thinking, when it comes to communication and transparency, there's, there's a question to talk about, maybe the public wants to know more about what's happening. So mentioning the, I guess, goals and, I think what's really important, in my experience, is progress reports. And, and, and not to be afraid to say we're, we get business and we're going out, we're having trouble beyond, I think, we have ten things we're trying to do here and it looks like two or three that we're gonna fall off on the wayside. There's nothing wrong in admitting that and saying it. But anyway, progress reports that are meaningful, help people understand, help people realize that people are just human and they're trying to.
I'm just gonna segue, segue us into the next question. So this is where I want to pick your brains. So I want to get your problem-solving hats on for me. And this is your big chance to, to also solve some of this. So we've got, we want progress reports. We started with accessing grants, we've got collaboration with other levels of government, showing the business case around some of this stuff, what else?
When the flushing pipes are just summer.
Big priorities. Okay. Let me ask you, from your, what's the first? You can pick four. Roads are number one?
Just general infrastructure.
Okay. What's number two?
Industry.
Need industry, what's number three?
Does that include economic development in general, or is industry specific?
We'll just say economic development.
Increase property.
Okay, a couple of definitelys.
Need, no looking down towards.
Okay, no, I'm gonna ask you, so, so we want more people?
We need housing, affordable housing.
Housing?
Slodderage.
What's that?
Slodger creation.
Slodger creation.
Flood mitigation.
What's that?
Flood mitigation.
But you're gonna like pick four, which one are you taking off? We've got circle, like, yeah, sometimes it's not such a good font on here either. I've got right now, I've got roads, infrastructure, needs industry, more people, and housing.
Take away more people, because if you bring four good things to the table, you're on the ground.
Okay.
We get more, but you and I have industry.
Okay, so we've got, so we're gonna take this one off and we're gonna replace it with?
Flood mitigation.
Flood mitigation.
And if flood mitigation is infrastructure, it's already.
Okay. I'm not gonna go in order, I'm just gonna try to go four. So are we agreeing? Flood mitigation, housing, we need industry, roads and infrastructure?
No.
Did your flood not be with your infrastructure? Is that not all combined together?
That could probably be one, two, three, and four.
Because your roads are gonna be bad every year and your town's gonna flood every year, so.
A lot of that attracts them to here.
So, we're good?
Yes.
Yeah. Anyone got, anyone got one that's left out?
I think recreation should be on there, as a whole.
To do what? The slashing?
That would include our beach and our campground, our cabin area, and sports and recreation.
Are, are you, her children, our trails, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Recreation could be a huge hole of your trails, your sports, your activities, your beach and the campground.
So that's one more than these?
We already have one, too.
I think that's how we're gonna keep people and get people though, and we've already had a few comments that the flood mitigation would go under infrastructure. So if we move flood under infrastructure, then we need to do recreation, because that's how we're gonna keep people here, and that's why we do keep people here, is the fact that we do have a beach, and we have trails, and we have, um, different programs, but they're, they're all aggressive right now.
But you need industry to attract people, you need the jobs to attract the people to town.
I don't know if we need industry, um, to attract people, I think our location alone makes us attractive to places like Brandon and whatnot. I think the composition of Menedosa and our location where we're set, the lake, we're more of a recreation town. And if we had housing, that would allow people to live here and commute to industry in larger center around us.
Okay.
If we need two of the towns to be ours, then we're gonna spend your money in other towns, and then we're not here, so move the jobs here. They have to drop over here.
I feel like small-town people, who live in a small town, or you choose to live in a small town, even if you commute to a city, um, you have that mindset and you support your small-town businesses as much as you can.
But that small town still needs to grow, otherwise it dies out.
If you don't have the young families, that one.
Okay, let me ask you guys, and I'm just more curious than I am now. So if we, if we had more industry, where are you gonna put all the people?
Where are you gonna put the industry?
Where are you gonna put the, oh, that's a good point, never thought of that one. Our main street's almost full, the industrial park is full, there's not, offhand, I might be a little close-minded, I don't picture another area that industry could be placed, whereas we are surrounded by parts of rapids. That's just my.
Yeah, well, that's good, that's good.
See, the valley, the valley is great, if we built our moat around the valley, but it's our, it's our personal limitation, because you can't expand it or inside town without, like where else is urban development or industrial pieces like, you know, numerous things that happen in poor areas. So you, we've run out of space with that, unless we're gonna be created to have industry outside the valley or outside the town, and it's a great people. So we're legit, I'm just wanting to build.
Yeah, that's fair. Yep.
So I have a question, how, how do we, um, get more money into the town when people come here and use the trails and motor lake, have their picnic's at the lake, pile their garbage in the bins and then they leave? They come for rent and they come for me, because they love it here, but where, there's not, they're not bringing money and they're bringing their own food, and they're not, there's only so many restaurants, I'm just curious, like, yeah, we've got it, we've got all this recreation, but how is that gonna make our town better financially? We need more money coming in here.
Okay, ideas?
We need to put a key up.
A lot of that, around here, and they use the slod part.
We did have that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just gonna catch you one at a time, okay, sorry.
We did have, we did, they did charge at the beach.
Okay.
Going in there. But, you know, it really hurt me when I saw a whole family, a big family, and that's what they did, they used the kitchenette, they piled their garbage up, stayed there all day, and they, you know, that's great that they came, but they didn't, somebody said, well, they went to town and only bought their choices. No, they brought this up and then they left. So how are we going to keep it there after already enough? So, why say I didn't have?
A restaurant out of danger?
They learned their own food, though.
Well, I think what the, what the whole intent in that would be, that the next time that they come, they hear the three minutes, that there's no need for us to bring our water, they want to buy water in the town or so, right? Or the next time they see that there's a beautiful campground here, they wanna spend the night, so I think it starts right at the beach and hopefully they return because they love it so much, but they fall in their mind.
Maybe they move here.
Or maybe they move here.
Yeah, well, I don't, in this particular situation, so I don't see that.
Let me ask you that, because I can't give the devil's hat, has it worked yet?
There's some, yes.
Yeah, there's examples of that. We had, we had a family that, that came here for Rockland Field, installed the gas station in town, some of the gas stations.
Okay.
So I know there's examples of, of bad situations that we can look at, but I don't think that we can say that we're putting on events, that people aren't going to spend some money. Rockland Field, here's a perfect example of how much money comes into this community. Um, speaking of the hockey and baseball fair, in three years, we travel, the first two things we do is get the kids to train, or to wear their playing their sports, and then we go find whatever local coffee shop we have to do, find where we're gonna stay, find it, we have a subway encounter, we're gonna go buy something, we're gonna go buy something that they can't eat at the local, yeah. So, so bringing those people in here, tourism is not different than it is anywhere else before, you gotta get them.
Yep.
So those events never talk to other.
So more events? Sorry, I'm just gonna ask them that one, more events, is that a solution?
Yes, yes.
And I think it's the best solution, we're just throwing ideas up right now, we're just kinda spit it on.
Well, the idea behind Amtrak was because we were building a big arena, we were gonna bring more teens in from outside, was it not? So that these teens and that could start using our facility and we could rent it out a little bit more, so.
Cool.
So again, we go back to that, as, as Terry was saying, bringing the families in, into Menedosa, so you're right.
And the investment that we're making with Amtrak, it's not just a hockey, I know that can be possible, but for inside studios for baseball, but we have tried to get numerous provincial championships here, level of field now, and one of the things that they told us that we couldn't have was because we didn't have a wheelchair accessible bathroom, and we didn't have controlled, you know, air-conditioned places where the umpires can get changed and get heat, that's been being taken off, so that, that's a, one example of infrastructure that we're putting in place, that's gonna be a good place, so now provincial applications can go in. It's likely the same for soccer, maybe the infrastructure of the town is.
We rent the soccer.
Yeah, the town is doing that as well.
That's what you're more events, Terry, but you're Amtrak, you can get more events in there.
Absolutely.
It's an all-year building with certain access to get in, but it's going to be a walking track in there as well, and in the summer it's gonna be open to different activities too, so it is, of course, a lot of people just a hockey rink that's being built, but it is more.
Okay.
So my, my criticism to it is that now that we've done our, our goal, this is where we tend to fall off, is that we need, we're building, we need to maintain, so the grounds need to be maintained, and that takes some incredible investments, and that is been done by volunteers, something that's about, we need to make sure that it costs money to do it, no question about it, the personnel, you know, that's a big space down there, but for twelve months of the year, not very easy to maintain in order to get those things, because we can't have a like, like rag-type thing where it's falling apart and then expect the profits to be sent down. So the work that's been done, we just need to maintain it, so that, I don't know if that's our greatest needs, if that's all we're trying to develop here, but it certainly is something we're gonna need to follow up with, because all the hard work's been put into that place, we need to maintain it forward and, and see its benefits.
Okay.
I think that.
Sorry?
I was just gonna say, I would add to that, though, the beach area and the cottage area as well, we got it, but the maintenance is a little sh-sh-shang.
Yeah.
Okay.
And because we don't market it very well, I don't think, sometimes, like, don't we have all this, just put it out there for everyone to know. And also, we have to.
I don't, I think.
Sorry, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go here.
Go ahead.
Just, I'll probably say, early on, we were talking about industry, and I think, what if we just took industry out of there and then just put jobs?
Okay.
Because then we could, you know, take a little bit of what kind of jobs.
Jobs?
Is that not economic development as a?
Yeah.
You gotta continue to grow, and I'm all for the rep side of it, but I think you need to continue to have a strong focus on your economic development.
Okay.
Another big stat, though, and I alluded to before, the expectation of reality with the law, is, does anyone see how much glass glass going through?
Yes, yeah.
That's due to the Filipino influence. We have not attracted that year because we do not have the housing. When I moved here five years, we've not had the housing. I think we got a lot of middle, since any, it's ridiculous. We do not have the housing to attract a thirty-five-year-old couple with a seven-five-year-old that's then going to use the recreation and bring the money back here to town. We're not gonna attract a bracket five and six workers from Highlight, that makes the twenty-one to twenty-two dollars an hour, and are buying the two-hundred to two-hundred thousand dollar houses, religiously equal right now to cover our community, we're not attracting that. So that's, our number stays in that twenty-eight-hundred number, because we don't have the housing to put these people in, never mind all the people we already populated, that's perfect. We're gonna have that because that's what Menedos is for, that people is a veteran community because we do not have the industry, more do we have the land to bring in more industry, we need to do something about housing, that's what that self-development's gonna be, to be honest, if we're going to look to build in that self-development, we still don't want to go in on that self-development to do more of the fact that it's just gonna be two-hundred dollars in taxes to every taxpayer who maybe get it done. I, many of friends that are from Menedosa, and I praise that we could not put any color in Menedos now from living here for five years, but we do not have an attraction policy. They do not want to live in nineteen sixty-five, eight hundred square foot house.
They rent, so it's not.
And, and they just ask, they want the four, the four meals, they'll come and commute to Brandon, they'll commute up to Clear Lake, they'll commute to Highlight, they'll commute to wherever they need to in our positions, we do not have that helps into attracting next generation.
Okay, we got housing. One of the top four priorities.
What are they right now, our four priorities?
We have roads and infrastructure, ED, economic development for jobs, housing, and flood mitigation.
I know we're only going before, but I think, I think this is achieving, and it's really about communication and transparency, that doesn't usually cost a lot of money.
Yeah, we've got that one there too. So, yeah, we'll make sure we've got that one all over the place.
Do we not have rec in our, I know we only have four, but we have picnic and reading again, or. Was rec not in there?
Nope.
Recreation? Oh.
It's just in a court.
Oh, no.
We've all got so much money, right? So where are you gonna put your money, where are you gonna put your resources?
Know what you can afford.
Yeah, know what you can afford.
And either repair, replace, whatever you do.
I'm curious to see what people think about jobs being on there, because I look in our paper and I look online and so on, and I think, I'm willing to say that fifty percent of our businesses in town are looking for people to work. So I'm not sure why jobs is on there, to be honest, like, I'm not sure of the specific jobs that they're looking for, or career, or are hospitals short-staffed, this is, yeah, I'm just not sure what the meaning of jobs would mean.
And go.
That's happening everywhere.
The labor truders?
Yeah.
All over the place, so it's not just.
No.
No, but there's why he said we need more jobs in town, but there are plenty of jobs to be had in town, so I wonder.
Right, is there someone that made thirty-four dollars a dollar, like, four, four hundred thousand dollars? Is there someone that made $34 a dollar, like, $400, $400 a dollar? Right? There's not just jobs, there is, there are wage jobs.
We've got plenty of jobs in town, but they're not good paying jobs.
Exactly.
They're the main jobs that might happen, or the pay that, I think, is important, obviously.
Thank you.
You can't work for jobs, work for dollars now.
Okay. So hire paid jobs.
But we need cheaper housing, for people to work the minimum wage jobs.
So we don't only need a housing, we need affordable housing? What about rents? Do you have lots of rented spaces here?
No.
So you need affordable rentals?
And if you have better planning for housing, transitional housing, senior, that can free up the lower end, like, little homes that are within that, that's where the older age people who aren't making money, that's where.
Okay, transitional?
I, I'm just. I'm just curious, we have a quick team of council members in here. Had there been, in the last few years, economic development opportunities that we've lost out to from other neighboring communities or other communities in the province? Or we just, we tried and it didn't work?
See, what we don't have is, is weapons, right? So that is the problem, is weapons, is what, and that's happening to be self-based, because you don't have water.
Can new people speak up?
Well, sorry, I'm saying, what's happening in the south is that they don't, both of the industries coming in the big money is water, basically. Right? So as in, beans for potatoes, or whatever, and in heaven valley, that's the other water, that's the resource, so they go longer, supply, the doctors, so we also have those problems.
Because we looked down the economic development goals on quite a few different occasions in this community, where we tried to put the resource into having someone who's specifically looking to do those types of things, and find investment in our communities. And for whatever reason, it just never came to fruition, for we have the industry coming in here. I was just curious if there was, you know, we're, we're missing because of something, whether it's there's not enough land, or, you know, because I, I, speaking on, on you have a couple of different times, we were approached, there was a, a housing, Winkler, they built a little bit of a brand, and they built just outside of Pettley, uh, near the city, and wanted to build something here, and we just couldn't find anything for them, any place to build it. So economic development is, it's great to put down a piece of paper, jobs is, jobs is everything. Jobs is, um, a problem national, uh, I think you can probably speak to that even more. Uh, but the economic development piece, I think, I agree with you, Kelly, that we need to try to figure out how we can get enough people here. But I'm just curious, that was why I was, are we losing out to other neighboring communities, and if so, why? And if we're not even in the conversation, what's the reason?
This question's new this afternoon, and, uh, no. You haven't necessarily been approached, um, but the other one was housing, right? The issue was really housing and?
On the ground, the budget, I might have a guy.
Sorry you say that?
I would buy a best town.
Yes.
That's, that's a bad name right there, for development.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go back to solutions. What other things have you got for, how else do we solve some of these problems? We've talked transparency, we've talked that we need to have priorities, we've talked planning. What else?
We tried, one of the, one of the mentioned, our volunteers have gone out. We need to step up and rock the Minnadosa, right? Step up and go and pick that lead that you see on the sidewalk. Go and show someone else the driveway, go and show someone else the sidewalks. We're not too ready to do that, we're just, we're, let's call speed, speed walk, roll, long point finger, step up and do it. Like the diamonds this year, it was atrocious. It was the first time doing it, it was the first time doing it, the first time the town took over. It was embarrassing as one of the head coaches of a softball team, and he just went and brought softball to the community, and it was, weeded over, it was embarrassing to say, "You're Minnadosa vices this year." So we had coaches step up and bring their trip, their bottom doors, and do all those things, we were thinking we could. That couldn't have prevented, because we already kind of prevented the measure from occurring. Instead, we wanted to put it on Facebook, good, make grab, and no one stepped up and did. But also, we, we had a transparent communication, what we could use for any of the herb sites, the spray, how to do this, to do all this stuff, right? And that's why recreation gets such a bad rap in this town. And especially the rate, because of us, the price, we can drop a lot of light, but, uh, And especially the rape, because of the price, we can talk about it later, but uh, good good night, we're gonna wrap this here, because no one volunteers step up while the town does it now. So, still private. But we need to get back to volunteering. When it comes to the ball courts, there's apples. I mean, almost there's another thing, like the valley like recreation, look at that. They have people spewing up there, finding where they want to do all this other stuff.
I think what you think and not speaking in there is key, is everybody needs to keep pride in their community.
Okay.
And if the sense of pride is lost, then you need to find a way to get pride and still back in, um, like you said, so that, you know, if I'm gonna shovel my sidewalk in front of my business, I'll shovel my neighbors. Because that's just what we do. Um, but that sense of pride, like, hey, we also see this. Like, that sense of pride needs to be, to build on that.
Okay? You've got established pride. What else?
Well, I think that's why I mentioned Parkson Rec at the whole as such a face thing. As a young family in town, and I know many of the committees that once did the work before Parkson Rec. That's why people come if they had housing, so they can use our beautiful town. To me, that campground and beach has always been an asset, and that's why we worked so hard to put a brand new, beautiful playground there. The sports, the ball diamonds, you know, like, there's not enough resources to keep those things going, and volunteers do wanna help. But, like, there needs to be more staffing and stuff to take over, because if all that falls aside and isn't there, then, like, that's what Minnesota is.
But in the defensive towns, I mean, we, we, I agree with everybody when there's something, Kelly, when he said, see, like, when you turn it back over to the, the town, um, the town needs to then be careful on new ideas that are coming from the community. Because when that group that is really strong in their initiatives retire, move away, whatever, then it falls back into the lap of the town, and they have to fund it somehow, or it's worth an idea somewhere else. So I think there's, there's a happy medium there. Like, I, I agree that it is on the town property, and there's responsibility, uh, to maintain it by the, by the town. But I also think that there is, it can't, every little thing, that has to be taken care of, because you still have a sense of obligation to the, the places that we're involved in. So, I think there's-
I think so, you go back to partnerships then. Between the town and between the organizations and the groups that are, are putting these recreational things in there. I mean, um-
So the partnership agreements?
It's partnerships. And it goes back to being proud of who you are volunteering. You know, we put the playgrounds in, we put the ball diamonds in, we do all that. We say, yay, great job, your town, look after it. And our town employees are busting their ass to try and get everything cleaned up. They've only got so many hours in there today to do what they are. So the volunteers and the organizations and the town need to start working together again.
Okay.
Which could fall under our saying about job descriptions, like-
Yeah.
You know, and then the community members would be like, okay, we would love to continue to do this part, but like, what does your employee have to take care of?
If I may, um, communication, communication, and communication. Because you listen to what's being said here, and I've listened to lots of it, and this stuff all back here, and talking about stepping out. The town decided, I, I don't know the reasons behind this, but I assume a part of the reason they stepped out from Parkson Rec, although, was so that parents, the parents not have to maintain town property. Had volunteers stepped up, like they did before, and helped the town, because let's face it, the town employees were swamped. And anybody doesn't think they were, and they obviously didn't drive around. They never went out through the night when they were manning pumps through the flood. They didn't have time to do all the work that they could, that they could have.
Right.
So you go back to this, this, I suppose, going over, step up and help out instead of playing. Again, having been proper communication, maybe none of that would have happened, but communication, communication.
I've got that down, I've got the Zoom meeting on there too, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Would a volunteer, a volunteer, you know?
That's good.
Might somebody that keeps off a hate, be a little help here? That is a coordinator, or a board, or whatever, maybe you can post it on there, say this is where we need, and this is where we need.
Okay.
But I think that's also MREC working with each year, very great. And I can be just on MREC, you're being present, major, especially right now, it's pretty easy, probably, well, if one person presents both, and send them asking, that's like a new software, it's provided to each year. But, you know, it's- There's travel, you also, unfortunately, it was more terror side of, you know.
What else, Kelly?
I think when you look back at housing, we need some kind of an incentive for investments. So we, we could have twenty lots that are ready for multi-family complexes like apartments, but if we don't have the people to build those, they're not gonna be there for people to rent. So there has to be some kind of an incentive for people to come to this town and invest their money in building those buildings, so we have that housing for those people.
So I want to circle back, we figured out on that. So some of these ideas that we have, we obviously are gonna need some funding. And that funding has to come in some, and usually that's how, there's a, it's all our strictness and grants are, so creating, creating money. So I think we still have to circle back, we have to look at our town finances, we have to look at our accounts payable or anything, or receivable, uh, given here. And this can all be budgeted, you know, pretty. Uh, we have to look at what our debt mode is gonna be for developing properties of the town. We have to look at where, what do we have in the, um, I mentioned some of these points before, that you, we, we all want in the dose of succeed. I, I'm heavily invested in this. And I've been here a very long time, and found the state. But this is no different than running your business. You have to know what you have in the bank, you have to know what your liabilities are, what is it gonna cost, at the end of the day, to sell all those lots. And then we can go to that subsidizing people who come in the middle of, they're on the tax rate for five years, I would use, whatever the plan will be in the day, we need to know when the calendar comes out, if we understand what it's gonna cost for that land, for rent, for loans, and just raise the loan down, we need that. That's correct.
I think, one of the words I, phrases I heard Mark say at the start there was, I think growing the tax base. But I don't see that, it could be my eyes, I don't see that recorded here. But I guess that goes with that housing development, and by growing the tax base, I think has to be, that's why we're talking about jobs and housing and-
So let's talk about that one. That's a good one. How do you grow the taxes?
And sell loans.
Is that the only one?
More than markets.
Assistance, I'm saying.
Especially large investors.
Well, I don't think it's all about the town having money, so, you know, you can court private investors to build the buildings as well, right?
Yeah, and that could come back to the housing issue too, whether it's the assistance, the senior living support, affordable, yeah. Housing.
So is that go back to incentives then? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we do, we do with private, we do.
Yeah, okay.
We have an element that also attracts people, you know, such beautiful things, watch parks, skiing, we have all these things that are on your green sheets.
Yep.
We have all of those. But what we're missing is, is the, is the plan and the desire to get either affordable houses, or we have some other houses where we can put more expensive houses, this and that, and this. And it's land to the south of us, and to the south, uh, everybody knows the land, it's small.
Sure.
So I know that has to be our focus, but we have to understand what we're doing there, we have to have professional people doing it, uh, not just, I've got an idea that's, that's to develop.
Okay, what else?
Can you speak to what other progressive municipalities, like, where the people are investing? Like, there's a lot of personal investment in those communities, right?
There's a lot of, like, there's a lot of-
Or names, you'd be all right.
There's a lot of private money in there. Like, there's a lot of people in that community that are investing their dollars in, back into that community, for sure. So that's part of how they're able to attract some of the businesses they have. Um, if we talk about portage, you know, one of the things that they've done is they've bought, you know, they've got land. So that's part of how they were able to get, you know, some of the processing they've had, some of the growth they've had, is they had cheap land, um, and were able to pretty much give away, um, for a long-term payout. So, that's kind of the two big communities that has received a lot of investment in terms of industry and stuff like that. Um, so-
With tourism, do you overlog PC? Where do you think, uh, such a tourist account, where do you think our rest, pay for our dollars account, that's due to the, to the head?
Oh, I, I, I know that-
You don't go there?
No, I'm not gonna go there. We'll have a beer or something, you know?
But if, if you use the example of a tourist account, that wasn't, and then turned around, would you be successful?
You know, probably, I think probably part of it is, how do you manage tourism? Because you have to have them spend their dollars here. So it's, it's part of, I think that's part of the challenge of any tourist place, is people will come and use your amenities, and they'll love them, and, you know, I've been on your lake, I've skied in your lake, I've, you know, I've done all kinds of stuff, but am I sticking around to spend my dollars here? And, you know, you guys are probably not wrong in exactly what you said, some of your challenges are, you know, probably one of your big ones is you don't really have a hotel that's gonna have people stay here, right? If you take a look at Eagle One, that's one of the things they've been, they've got private investment money to come and build a hotel. But you're not, one of the things I, and I, you know, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm just gonna, just a little soapbox, just a little one, is, what I say is to any, uh, community, is, uh, it's easy to look down the road and try to become somebody else. But what I'll tell you is if everybody was, had a Tim Hortons on every corner, and had a Walmart, and had all that stuff, we'd all be living in exactly the same community. What I think you have to do is figure out you. And, and I know Eagle One looks attractive, and Gladstone looks attractive, and Portage looks attractive, and, and that, but you gotta figure out you. And that's part of what this is, is trying to figure out you. Because not everyone's gonna get a deep processing plant, and not everyone's gonna get a high life, and not everyone's gonna get, you know, all of it. I haven't been to a community yet that hasn't wanted one of them. Brandon wants them. You know, everybody wants something like that, and they're not, you know, it's not like they're falling out of the sky, it just takes tons of work. So, I'm not saying don't go shoot for the stars and that, but just be aware of that.
So it comes back to, they're talking about how our parks are.
Well, that's certainly, it's certainly attraction. But now, how do you capitalize on it?
Well, it is attraction. Where are people looking at the end of the list, and say, wow, we found that, wow, we can talk more, wow, we can talk, to an hour, so, and you, it just comes back to, just getting more people for the conversation.
Do you have a planning and marketing?
Planning and marketing.
Like, why isn't the campground, the property generating, profit generating system for the town? The town owns it, but they haven't capitalized on it. You have people coming to your beach, but there's a whole restaurant there. There's a whole campground that's, I mean, it's, it's an excellent campground, but how does it come to? Why aren't we making money off of that to fund more of these things? So there should be a lot of revenue that comes from those areas, and we have more coming, right? We, we have the, the valley like trails that are coming, that, that's part of a larger provincial system, of attracting, like, cross-country people to come to this area to ride their bike, for the gift here. What are we doing with this town?
Well, I think that's a challenge. But come ride your trails, you got a new trail maintenance, but if they're not putting any dollars into anything here, they're a lost opportunity. There is absolutely no, no, no doubt that you guys have got great amenities here.
We want them to stay, and buy a house, and we're shopping for new clothes, or we're down on the, on the, on the, go down on the, you know?
And I think we just had an example of communication here, unless I've totally been out, the campground does generate revenue, does it not?
Yeah, you know-
Where does the revenue go?
That, sure.
So that's communication again, right?
Yeah.
And, and we can find out, if we have to go there, just to show you.
I think the cottage area also generates money from the town.
That's all part of it.
Okay. Frank, you've got something there, bud? I just scared him. He's like, damn, I'm shooting my name. What else we got?
It sounds to me like housing is a combination, whether you have a hotel, or people to rent or live, seems to be, you know, our biggest issue. It's, it's kind of upsetting that I hear Terry saying that, you know, there was a builder who wanted to build something here, a park building or whatever, and we didn't have the space, when we have property that's been sitting undeveloped for so, so long. I don't know if conversations transpired during that idea or what, but those are the kind of missed opportunities through lack of communication, if there was. Um, and that's what I think a lot of us are saying, is a combination of housing and communication. That seems to be our biggest theme, everyone seems to be talking about. And I come from a tourism world of twenty-three years, but it also has it.
Oh, well.
We definitely have it, we just need to know how to use it. And the whole idea is when people come here to stay, there's a place to stay, the idea is to get as much dollars on other walls as you possibly can. And we have the things here. You know, we're a great wedding venue, we're a great, um, bachelorette and bachelor party venue, and we've got a golf course, and spas, and the nail technicians, all that stuff. We just need to know how to communicate it, market it, and find out how to not miss the opportunities we already have, instead of thinking grand dose of the pea plants and all that stuff that you referred to. Because as you say, everybody wants that. We have such great jewels here in Minnadoosa, that we just need to tap into and work together
Sit out of place, beautiful, awesome. He loves it.
And that's why I love coming, I moved back to Minnadoosa, because we have so much of the green points on those paper, but we just, as someone alluded to, there's a lack of trust, um, and things like that, we just need to get back, and, you know, we can do it. We've done it with sandbagging. We've done that as community before, and that's the best part, is when somebody or people are in trouble, we all band together. And our town is slightly in trouble, we need to band together with lots of the ideas that are here. But that's why you're here though, is because I think we get stuck as to what is our first step, or four step, because that's gonna be different for everybody in this room, right? We're not all gonna agree on the four points, you know, even. But, um, I'm carrying a big fleet here, which is housing, and whatever capacity that is. So I know my eyes are a bit open here through comments and things from other people, and I, I appreciate the even, you know, and-
One big mistake I, I was missing, my accident, is, um, focus on keeping the morale of people up. And the greatest in rec condition, uh, that it required to keep people's morale up, and that can translate into a lot of different, um, problems.
Yeah, that's a great one, keeping the morale up. You know, I think, I think collectively, we could agree that, you know, last couple years of COVID and everything else has kind of got us all a little bit dragged down, and sometimes we forget how really good things are. Um, and, you know, as an outsider, I can say, you guys are a beautiful community, really. Or beer and pizza. Who's buying? We'll come up with all kinds of really good ideas at that point. Is there other solutions? Is there anything we've missed? You'll go home tonight, you'll wake up at two o'clock in the morning, you'll go, I got the solution.
I know, whenever I, you know, if I travel a little bit, when I come back, it's, it's almost like you're coming to this for the first time, and you see things that you don't see, because you're always a bit, so generally speaking, if somebody comes into town, whether it's our, you see it, your own, uh, telephone, you, you can see things that you don't see. So I think, I think you should hold it up in a sheet, and tell us what you have seen, because you, you can see the streets, you can see how, you know, things are, and you know we have, like I said, four, and if people wish, they have.
Let me tell you what I've seen, okay? Uh, restaurants, like, I've now, in the last month, eaten in three different restaurants, and, oh my goodness, like, you guys have got some amazing restaurants. Um, actually, I'm heading to my parents' back here, yeah, next weekend, uh, to go to Farm 50 again, because it's just too good. Um, next thing I've seen is, I have walked the streets a little bit, been wrapping down a couple streets, and I have, I have always had someone say hello, and smile, and incredibly welcoming. So you guys have got that, like, top notch. Um, I think that you probably don't hurt yourselves, because I think your challenge is the same challenge that it's every community's facing. We all have IT infrastructure, we all have tax rates that are way too high, um, we all have, uh, things that are undone, we have the challenge of things being built, and then, it's, like, we can, it's easy to go get dollars to build something, you can get government funding, everybody loves a photo op, right? So they'll come and they'll give you money to build something, but then there's no money necessarily to take care of it after. And that's, uh, that's a big problem, it's a big one in Brandon, it's a big one in Winnipeg. If you look at Winnipeg streets or Brandon streets, we're exactly the same as you. Um, our province doesn't necessarily do our, like, first street or eighteenth, so we have the same thing. So I think it's important not to get down on yourselves, because, you know, you're not alone, I'm not saying it's perfect, um, but, you know, it's not like Minnadoosa's any worse than anywhere else. In fact, I think you guys have done such an amazing job on your rec side. Like, in terms of, like, just think, just, just for a moment, like, every time I've written this down, this list of, of amenities that you have for a community the size of you, like, whoa. Pretty impressive. So, you know, don't forget that. Um, you know, I think, I think there's some challenges. You know, I've heard over and over again about housing, and I've heard over and again about, you know, you can get events here, but how do you keep people here? But, you know, those are things that you can solve. Those are solvable. You can't rebuild a valley, by the way. Like, this scenery here, you can't buy that, so, you know.
Is there a way, you were talking about pro-home, and thinking about things, talking to neighbors, of them getting inside views, and then putting them to you, or on the computer, so there might be more ideas coming in too?
It's like I painted.
We didn't hear what she said.
She said, is there some way that, that, you know, when you go home, if you come up with ideas and thoughts, and you think about things that you want, you know, or that there's other people that you talk to at the coffee shop, that they might wanna give you some stuff? Is there a way that they can get their feedback? And I said to her, it's like I painted. So I've got some handouts here, and we've got, oh, thanks, Jim.
The check I think you wrote.
Oh, yeah, it's in the mail. Um, the other thing that we're doing is we're doing a community survey, and it's really a ten-minute survey, go on, it's got some different questions on it. Um, I've got a handout for everyone, so that you can take it home and maybe, you know, not forget. It's on the Minnadoosa website, it's absolutely confidential, so please be as frank and honest as you wanna be, we'll gather all the information. Um, and I, you know, if I've got one big favor, other than the fact, and I wanna thank all of you for coming tonight, um, is, my other ask is, could you please go and tell one friend? Like, take your sheet and give it to them, and say, please go fill out the survey. You know, there's lots of, we, this is the fourth session that we've done, and everyone gives me a little bit different information, but the more information, the more ideas we can get, the, the better our overall plan will be. So if somebody didn't wanna come tonight, that's okay. And I don't care if they're eighteen or they're a hundred and eighteen. We wanna get everyone's feedback, because everyone will have a different priority, a different issue, a different thing you'd like to see, so, um, if you can do that for me, that'd be great.
Would this also maybe send over to the chamber, can the chamber send us over too?
Yeah, so just go on the Minnadoosa website, and, uh, yeah, it's a really short survey, I promise it'll be good.
How long is that survey going to be?
October sixteenth at four thirty.
Okay.
I'll shut it down.
Okay.
And just so you know, that there will also be a, um, a report on that survey. So we'll actually put that right back up on the website, uh, hopefully before the end of October, so people can actually see what everyone has said. Okay? Okay, well, I, if I'm not missing anything, anybody wants to come talk to me, I'm gonna be standing here for a while, so come tell me if you wanna talk to me personally or whatever. Uh, I wanna just thank all of you very, very much for coming out tonight, I really, really, really appreciate it. I, I'm amazed, I, I, I have worked with Brandon City Council, I can tell you, they would be stoked to see this many people at one of their public areas, or one of their public meetings. You guys knocked out the park, so thank you all very much, I'm headed to Jim.
Just one point to add, uh, once we've got this strategic plan put together, talk about communication and transparency, it'll be made, uh, open to the public on the website, uh, share, share it around. Uh, timeframe of that is likely end of the year, early January.
Thank you for being here, I mean, we're all in here.